Hi, welcome. Good evening. Welcome to the City of Pinole Planning Commission in our regular meeting from Monday, January 8th, 2024. There are several ways to watch the meeting. One is here in person at the Pinole City Council Chambers at 2131 Pear Street. You can watch it live on Channel 26 at www.cipinole.ca.us to see the channel. You can video stream it live on the city's website, or you can watch it via Zoom Video Conference, and that address is https://us02web.zoom.us/j/86505375301, or via the Zoom webinar ID, 86505375301, and then you have to call in via phone at area code 669-900-6833, or area code 253-215-8782, or area code 346-248-7799. If any, none of those options are available to you, or if you need any assistance with public comment, please contact Planning Manager David Hannam at area code 510-724-8912, or via email at dhannam@ci.pinole.ca.us. The first, oh, there's Tim. And with that, I will call this meeting to order. If everyone could, for item B1, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To look back, the United States of America into a republic which stands obligation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, item B2, the Latin Acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge the Aloney people, who are the traditional custodians of this land. We pay our respects to the Aloney elders, past, present, and future, who call this place Aloneyland, the land that Pinole sits upon their home. We are proud to continue their tradition of coming together and growing as a community. We thank the Aloney community for their stewardship and support, and we look forward to strengthening our ties as we continue our relationship of mutual respect and understanding. Item B3, roll call. Planning Manager Hannam, if you could roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Lam Julian?
Here.
Commissioner Sandoval?
Present.
Commissioner Bender?
Present.
Mr. Benuelos?
Here.
Commissioner Martinez?
Here.
Vice Chair Menes?
Here. Usual ex parte communication to email list about meeting.
Okay. Chair Binzuli?
Here.
Let the record show that we have a quorum tonight with all seven members being here. Thank you.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is "See Citizens to be Heard." The public may address the planning commission on items that are within its jurisdiction and not otherwise listed on the agenda. Planning commissions may discuss the matter brought to their attention, but by state law, the Ralph M. Brown Act, action must be deferred to a future meeting. Time allowed will be five minutes each. I understand there is one person with a "Citizens to be Heard," Raquel Contreras on the Uptown Yard. Thank you.
Hi, and Happy New Year. Thank you for having me here. I am just, you know, coming to follow up on the situation with Uptown Yard, 2337 San Pablo Avenue. I have not received any update or anything, nor from the city, from Public Works has been very helpful in resolving the issue, or even addressed it to sit down and talk, to redraw the easement line. And, you know, it just feels like nothing's done to help the downtown get revitalized, and I'm doing my best. You know, I've gotten a lot of support from the community because they want to see a change, and we're doing something really good and positive. So, we can't wait another 25 years, you know? That's all. So, I just need a little bit more help from you guys, a little bit more push, maybe?
Okay, well, thank you. I know, is there any update? I mean, I know last time it was an easement issue with the city and multiple, or multiple property entities right around that area.
Yeah, I mean, those are all being handled by Public Works at this point. So, if Raquel would like me to schedule, try to get a meeting with the Public Works Director, I can do that. If you could send me an email, and I'll set a meeting up and get everybody in the room, and then we can discuss what needs to happen with that easement, or what the city wants to do with that easement. So...
Okay, appreciate it.
Uh-huh, no problem.
All right, thank you. Just another, any other citizens to be heard online, or...
Uh, yeah, I do see a hand raise online, a person with a phone number ending in 5748.
Okay, please go ahead.
And when he's ready, I think you press star six and mute.
So you may go ahead, once you unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Yeah, hi, we can hear you.
Oh, my name is Anthony Vospring, and I would like to echo the previous public commenter that took the time out of her busy day and work to come downtown to talk to you people in the live, and I hope you take it seriously, because I brought it up in the last meeting, but obviously, nobody did their homework or wanted to pass it on to the right department at the time, and that seems to be an ongoing problem. So, I think that should be addressed, you know? If these directors and managers that get paid the big bucks are going to have to step up to the plate and be accountable, or be responsible for public feedback, public comments, and be more transparent. Otherwise, you know, who wants to come before the planning commission, or the city council, for that matter, and/or the staff, if there's a disconnect, you know, and something has to be done about that? Because several times, several people have voiced different comments on different issues and questions, and they say, "Well, we'll get back to you in short order, or we'll get back to you by the next meeting, or next month, or the following month." And it's been my personal experience, and from others, in dealing with the city of Pinole, it's like you're dealing with a village, if not an army, to have to get something done. And everything happens, seems to be happening in threes. You know, if it doesn't take three weeks at the earliest, it takes three months, and if it's not three months, you better hold your breath, because it might end up taking three years. But anyway, kudos to the Uptown Yard lady and her input with regard to what can and cannot be done with help from the city of Pinole. I'd like to also bring up again the timing of the stoplights on Pinole Valley Road. They're out of sync, and the streetlights up and down Pinole Valley Road need to be re-synced by somebody. Mr. Mishra, or one of the other directors or managers has to make a call on that. With that in mind, there are too many stoplights up and down Pinole Valley Road. There were like, more than half a dozen there between Trader Joe Shopping Center, the high school, and Granada Court. And case in point, for every stop-and-go traffic going and coming westbound and eastbound on Pinole Valley Road, having to stop in the middle of the night after eight or nine o'clock when there's no traffic, you know, and throughout the day, unnecessarily make all those extra stops at those stoplights, that's emitting anywhere from a minimum of 20% to 30% carbon emission, emission that's not contributing to our environment with regard to that. And we need to either put those, some of those stoplights on blinker timers after eight or nine o'clock at night, like it can blink yellow or red, whichever direction, or remove one or two of those stoplights, because there are just too many there. And right next to that, on Granada Court and Shade Drive, right down the road, right across the street from the, I believe it's the Realtors' Office or somewhere, there's a double telephone pole on the ADA crosswalk that's obstructing the crosswalk, and it needs to be addressed. It's being held together with duct tape, wires, and other things by PG&E, if not AT&amp;T. And they were supposed to fix that, but there's two one and a half poles that are standing in the way of the sidewalk and obstructing ADA access, as well as if there was an accident there and someone hit that pole, it would topple, topple over on a pedestrian, if not the cars, and/or the person's house right there on the corner. So, that's another accident waiting to happen, and then we'll have a lawsuit to deal with, to put the attorneys to work at the city of Pinole. Also, I'd like to mention that the trash cans are still an issue at the dog park and the barbecue grill. They said they would look into it and be addressed. No one has called me on it, or anybody from that area, that over a dozen trash cans are missing their lids, half a dozen are missing the lids. It's attracting vermin, and the homeless people, and the people that do drugs up there on Adobe Road, they're dropping their beer bottles and beer cans in the trash cans.
Okay, so you're coming here five minutes?
The city of Pinole isn't emptying them out on a regular basis.
Okay, Mr. Vospring, you've hit your five minutes. Thank you very much for wrapping that up. Thank you. Most of those sounded like the Public Works. I know there's a Traffic and Safety Committee that deals with timing of lights. I know the telephone pole he's talking about, because I'm passed by it every day.
Yeah, I mean, they have a committee, the transportation, I'm not quite sure the name, but I'll just call it the Transportation Committee, and they discuss those items. I have reached out to Director Mishra, and they are working on the timing of the lights and getting that, getting those timed. And so, it's a work in progress at this point.
I'd also like to suggest to Mr. Vospring that the Traffic and Pedestrian Safety Committee is going to be meeting this Wednesday, and that would probably be a good subcommittee to bring up his concerns about the timing of stoplights in particular, but also about the telephone pole blocking the crosswalk. I think that would fall better, probably, within their jurisdiction than ours. That's all.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard, just either online or in person?
Not this time.
Great, thank you. That, we can move on to item D, Meeting Minutes. The Planning Commission Meeting Minute from December 11th, 2023. Does anyone have any questions, or comments, or edits? Commissioner Bender?
Yes, on page six, line 29, it says, "Types 20 licenses since he understood the area of San Pablo Avenue was currently under a moratorium." I stated that the city of San Pablo was currently under a moratorium, per the ABC. I just want to make that correction. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Menes, any questions or comments?
I think on page eight, it says that I suggested that A3 was unclear by design, did not meet the threshold, and...
Oh, sorry, what line number?
Line one, on page eight. I think it was more, yes, it was unclear by design, but what I said was, what needed to be reported was whether it met the threshold or not, and not more details in there, not that A3 did not meet the threshold, if that makes sense, because that would be a different finding, and that wasn't indicated.
Okay, so what would you propose the edits? You just proposed that the, I understand what you were wanting to get at.
I would edit it to say, after the design comma, say, "A3 wasn't about identifying details so much as meeting a threshold."
I mean, you could just say, "Did not meet the," get rid of the "did not meet the threshold", and...
Yeah, we could just say for simplicity.
...by deciding to say, "Did identify the details."
Yeah.
And we can also go back to the video, we'll go back to the video as well, and so we can massage that, and then we'll bring, you'll see that at your next meeting.
Right, because I'm pretty sure I didn't say that A3 didn't meet the threshold that, you know, A3 has to meet, because it did, but it wasn't adequate for the commission, which is a different question.
Right.
Is there anything else?
Let's see. I'm checking to make sure there wasn't anything else I missed. No, that's all for the minutes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Benuelos?
Yes.
Commissioner Martinez?
None.
Commissioner Lam Julian?
None.
And Commissioner Sandoval?
No.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes as is, except for page six, line 29, which was the city of San Pablo, the moratorium edit, as well as page eight, line one, the deleting of the threshold language?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Quick, take a quick vote?
Okay, Commissioner Lam Julian?
Yes.
Commissioner Sandoval?
Yes.
Commissioner Bender?
Yes.
Commissioner Benuelos?
Yes.
Commissioner Martinez?
Abstain.
Abstain. And Vice Chair Menes?
Yes.
Chair Binzuli?
Yes.
Motion carries 601 with one abstention.
Okay. Moving on to item B, Public Hearings. We have one item on the agenda tonight, the Conditional Use Permit, CUP 23-04, the Anavi Shell Station Alcohol Sales Use Permit. Supplemental information for the CUP 2304, which was continued from December 11th, 2023. Request is a consideration of a use permit request to allow the sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption under a type 20 license at the Anavi Shell Station, 1401 Fitzgerald Drive. The project qualifies for a SEQA exemption under SEQA Guideline Section 15301. The applicant is Anavi Shell, 1401 Fitzgerald Drive, Pinole, California, 94564. The location is 1401 Fitzgerald Drive, number 42608036. And the staff representative is David Hannam. Do we have a presentation?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before you tonight is, I'm just going to kind of go a little bit over the background of what we talked about at the last meeting, and then go over the supplemental information that you received as part of your packet with this. As the chair just stated, the project is located at 1401 Fitzgerald Drive. The project is zoned RC, Regional Commercial, with a general plan and land use designation of Regional Commercial. The project description is basically, the applicant is seeking an approval of a conditional use permit to allow beer and wine to be sold, which is a type 20 license for off-site consumption. The Shell Station has been operating at 1401 since 2007. The business is 12 fielding stations, a convenience store, and a car wash. Property is approximately 31,980 square feet, with the convenience store taking up about 2667 square feet. In terms of the alcohol use permit, the city is required to look at Code Section 17.59030, which prescribes the review process, which is required before opening a new business or extending hours of operations of any establishment that sells or serves any alcoholic beverages. And that is, and that's also included as part of, in terms of entitlement, that I see a business that sells alcohol is required a conditional use permit under 17.12. And also in 17.20080, requires a conditional use permit for alcohol sales. The applicant went through the, what we call the public convenience and necessity, which is done by the city council, and what that is, is the public convenience and necessity is a requirement that once a city or a census tract reaches a saturation, which is basically five licenses or more within that census tract, that that becomes a saturation in which a PC, what we call PCN, or Public Convenience Necessity Funding, is required. The city council approved that back in September of 2023. And so now, now since they approved that there is a necessity, now we can follow through with the conditional use permit process, and that's what we have, we have here tonight. Basically, staff has gone through the findings for 17.0930, which requires that the list of establishment, actually, November 7th, I'm sorry, I had the wrong date for the panel meeting, it was November 7th, 2023, that the city council approved the public convenience or necessity. ABC indicated that there is overconcentration of sales. that there is over concentration of sales, uh, since the Penole City Council approved a determination, alcohol beverage control to provide a license for alcohol sales where there is an over concentration of census tract. Uh, since since the council did approve it, then we can move forward as stated before. Um, potentially the applicant to the proximity of, we have to take a look at the proximity of applicant to a school, park, playground, recreation center, daycare, um, base basically staff response, there are five establishments located Fitzgerald Drive with that have onsite licenses, including Target, Bevmo, Lucky Grocery and Food Max, and Penole Vista Liquors. Uh, Anavi sells a gas station and convenience store that provides small merchandise items. This establishment is a common commercial area and is not near any school parks or other public facilities. The nearest the nearest public facility is a junior high, and it's well over 1,000 feet away, uh, which is uh, between the Target Center and then the Best Buy of Jovial Jovita Lane. So it's well well past 1,000 foot mark of that. Uh, staff listed where the onsite, uh, all of the onsite alcohol sale establishments within the census tract, uh, 3630 are, and the types of licenses, um, that are available. As you can see, most of the licenses are 21s, which allow for the selling of distilled spirits. There are only four licenses that are or three licenses, actually two licenses, I'm sorry, two licenses that sell just beer and wine, uh, with both of that, both convenience stores. The Shell, uh, as part of as part of, uh, the item that was seen, the the planning commission opened the public hearing, closed the public hearing, uh, and took comment, uh, and as part of their deliberation, uh, required that more information was needed as part of this project, and so staff went back and looked at the information, uh, that was that was looked that was being requested, and that was included the memorandum that supplements the staff, the staff report. Shell Station, again, just kind of background, again, uh, been operating operating at 1401 Fitzgerald since 2007. Uh, the planning commission, as regular meeting, received an oral report from the planning manager on the CUP request, opened and closed the public hearing, and deliberated on the item. Staff recommended the adoption of attachment A, which approved conditional use permit 2304, permitting the off-site off-premise sales of beer and wine subject to the conditions of approval at the Anavi Station at 1401 Fitzgerald Drive. As a result of the deliberations, the planning commission moved to continue the item for additional data regarding crime statistics along Fitzgerald Drive corridor from Apian Way to Interstate 80, per the Penole Municipal Code, uh, section 17 point oh 30A3 on pages three and four of the staff report dated 1120, December 11th, 2023. As part of the analysis, uh, for the alcohol sales, uh, the planning commission reviewed the extent to which the crime reporting districts in which the subject site is located exceeds the average crime reporting, uh, subject to the jurisdiction of the police department. Uh, I mean, you're required to review that to make sure that it does. Uh, staff met with the police department to review the project prior to the December 11th, 2023, planning commission meeting, and after a formal review by the police department, the police department determined that the crime reporting for the district does not exceed the average for crime reporting districts. The police department did not raise any objections or concerns related to the alcohol sales request. As part of the as part of the December 11th meeting, as the additional information was was warranted by the planning commission, uh, staff went back, uh, and looked at crimes, uh, crimes related within within the corridor, the Fitzgerald corridor between Apian and um, and uh, I-80. Uh, these these crimes were basically staff basically took a look, and you see the quote from the table, because I've I've outlined all of the um, all of the crimes or the reports incidents that were reported, um, after, and these were all on the police blotter, and it's available there is available online, so you can see all of these. I've take I took it right off of that. Um, and in consultation with the police department, they also mentioned that that it's very to predict, they don't really predict crime, they can't predict crime, uh, they don't report on that. They do have they the matrix that, uh, Commissioner Lam Julian mentioned at the last meeting, that there is as a part of their reporting the crimes, like the FBI, they have a tier one, tier two, tier three. Um, most of the most of the incidences that are reported in the report are more of tier three type of, which are more of your robberies, your thefts, your, you know, tier ones are your murders, your homicides, your, you know, those types of things, your tier two crimes, you know, more of your strong armed robbery, you know, tho- those types of things. And they felt that most of these crimes fell within the tier three, which is, uh, you know, theft, and you can see what, based on the incidents, um, that are required, this this is this period of time is basically from 101723 all the way to December 29th, 23. So this is very current of what's happened in the area. Um, and as you can see, in terms of the crime incidences, the first column of the table is basically all of the crimes committed. Um, the second column is crimes committed within the Fitzgerald corridor, and then the third, uh, which there's a percentage, we gave a percentage. Uh, the police department didn't like us to give percentages because it's not based on all the crimes. There are some things that that the blotter does not pick up, um, that are there are personal crimes that they that we don't get we don't get access to. So but just based on the blotter, um, they were okay with that. That's within the Fitzgerald corridor. So these are just, you know, uh, you know, somebody stole the wallet, somebody stole a car, somebody stole something from a store. Um, that's the those are the incidences that's happened within the within the time period. Um, after staff met with the police department, uh, they were, um, they still had no reason to believe that the station this this station selling beer and wine would have a negative impact on the crime rate. Um, consistent with the staff recommendations presented in the staff report dated, uh, December 11th to 2023, staff is recommending that, uh, the planning commission approve resolution 2304, uh, CUP 2304, which permits the off-premise sale of beer and wine subject to conditions of approval, uh, at the Anavi Shell at 1401 Fitzgerald Drive. So and the resolution, uh, is is here with you. If you have any questions, that ends my presentation tonight. So, uh, we do have, uh, the applicant provided a small little, uh, video, um, that I received this afternoon. Sorry, I got it real late this afternoon. Uh, so Dave, if you're if you were there, I mean, I think we're gonna have to open up a public hearing again, and and um, and uh, and then the applicant can the applicant is here to speak again on the project. So so with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Um, just a quick point. So are we never really completed the last agenda item from last month? Are we just looking at the crime stuff this time, or is anything part of the conditioning permit subject discussion all over again?
Uh, technically, everything is open to open, everything is open to be had be discussed. However, this was the information that you asked, um, to be, if I understand, is Eric online?
David's Alex. You're you're correct, and the planning commission can can, uh, discuss any aspect of the application.
Right, okay, yes, I thought, okay.
Yeah, I just want to make sure to set the boundaries for the the conversation.
Yeah, so so yes, is there's anything else you can you that you would like to talk about, we can talk about tonight?
Okay. Um, we'll go around and see if anyone has a question for staff. Commissioner Bender?
Yes, um, Dave, I'd like a clarification, uh, regarding the proximity to school park, et cetera. Is it, you mentioned 1,000 feet, is that is what the requirement is?
For ABC.
For ABC, okay. I couldn't find that. Thanks so much. Um, second question is the ABC determination of over concentration of alcohol sales licenses. Can staff or council provide a clarification of what exactly is that criteria? I mean, we see this in the staff report, but I personally would like to see just a better definition of what it actually entails.
It's an ABC determination, not a city's determination. So it's a once, once you reach that certain criteria from the ABC standpoint, that's what they that's that's their, uh, then at that point, then we would need to then we file the public determination necessity.
Okay.
So it's it's just set by it's set by ABC.
Okay. And then my final question, um, is there a difference between over concentration versus under concentration? Um, because I came across that under the California Business and Professional Code.
Well, in some cases, like in some census tracts, there only might be one, you know, there might only be one place that sells. Normally, five is kind of like the the magic number, so to speak. So in some of these big census tracts out in the, you know, in the ag areas and that, you know, you're not going to have more than one. Um, and yet some of the census tracts, you know, they're all drawn differently. So, you know, there could be census tracts that are mostly residential that don't have alcohol. So, uh, in terms of commercial, in terms of commercial and 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 I would say industrial as well, because you can have within a conditional use permit, you could have some retail sales, uh, within within industrial area. That's where the concentration is, and sometimes the census tracts are so small or so big that, you know, like to say Bevmo is in one census tract and and Anavi is in another census tract. So there wouldn't you wouldn't necessarily, there might be 10, there might be nine in what you would think would be the same block area, but they would be over two or three census tracts. So it's just the line, it's where all the lines are.
Okay.
Are drawn.
Well, thanks for that clarification, but um, the reason why I became curious about that is I was trying to assess in my own mind the implication of the average of the crime being 29%. It was shown on the chart. Um, and that's kind of where a little bit of research, that's where I came across the California Business and Professional Code, blah, blah, blah. And they talked about a trigger of 20% in terms of crime for where that applica- application is being made relative to the jurisdiction of the of the local police enforcement agency.
Say say that again?
Uh, I came across there in the text under the California Business and Professional Code, 23958.4, they talked about. The undue concentration may exist where the applicant premises are located in a crime reporting district that has a 20% greater number of reported crimes. And that's, that's why I've come was asking this question about the undue concentration.
Well, that's why that's that's why you have the PCN process. So if the if the, because that could be considered undue concentration, or, you know, whether it's too many licenses in a track, then the council then would have that ability to say, you know, with the public convenience and necessity, whether it's necessary or not. And in this case, our council approved that it would be, that would be okay. Uh, so there's no, I don't think the code, and I have to look up the code to be honest with you, but I don't think it says that once you reach that, you can't have anymore. So I I would have to look at that to see where where that code is, what it says. But yeah, that's that's usually it. Once a once a determination's been made with it, there's a quote, an over concentration, then that's where the public convenience and necessity, um, go comes into play, at least with the city. Some cities don't have that. Some cities just approve the conditional use permit and move forward with that. They don't even have that step in terms of public convenience and necessity. They adopt it all in the conditional use permit. So for us to have that separate process to go through before you even get to the conditional use permit gives us the gives us a better bitter leg up in terms of of determining what's needed for the community.
Okay. Chair No.
Thank you. Vice Chair Metis?
I have a few questions that are linked back to the set of conditions of approval that are attached. Uh, first off, last time, I think we were we suggested we were going to add a condition 29, that coolers would be locked between 2:00 and 6:00 AM. I don't see that condition added in the new packet. Secondly, and I should have caught this back, we were going through it in December, but I just caught it now. Uh, condition number 22 says licensee of its employees shall regularly police the area, and that should probably be licensee or. Thirdly, there's a few different conditions that say what can happen to the use permit if something goes wrong, like condition one says, if any of the conditions are found to be disregarded, the use permit will be subject to revocation. But condition 13 says if use permits are conditions are not a tier two, the use permit is subject to subsequent review by the planning commission. Action by the review body may include but are not limited to various different things. And then on condition number 23, it says if any of these conditions are found to be disregarded, the use permit for alcohol sales will be subject to revocation. So it's seems like there's multiple different conditions that allow for different things to happen. And I'm just curious, which of them governs? Do they all do? If there's a conflict, which one of them triggers first?
Well, it depends on what the issue is with it depends on what the issue is with the with with the 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 project. The gas station, the the gas station, I I don't know if it received a CUP in 2007. Uh, the city, the city didn't govern or didn't require conditional use permits for gas stations back then. Um, and so that is probably that would be the like condition number one. So the overall, just the overall conditional use permit for the project. Um, the um, potential closure, so that's so that's the one. The second one regarding the, which is condition 13, um. Is that, oh, this is basically kind of giving you the the note, this is like the notice and requirement. So, for example, if if the operation result that we're required, uh, we're required to refer to the planning commission or subsequent review, which means that probably staff would go out, do us do us do a an inspection to see if they're doing, if they're what they should be doing is the right thing. If not, then we would refer that to the planning commission, and it just gives that we've got to notify, uh, the, um, we have to notify the property owner of 10 day of a public hearing for a revocation of the permit. So they are kind of different. Uh, and then the third one, condition number 23, I think is what you said?
Right.
Is just regarding alcohol sales. So for example, if the alcohol sales is what's causing all of this problem, uh, you could come back, the commission could come back and say, we're going to revocate the conditional use permit to sell alcohol, and though it still would be allowed to operate their business. So they are kind of three separate ones for like the whole, like the the whole thing. The other one is for, uh, you know, just the notification of what what's happening there. And then the third one is just for if there are issues with alcohol sales alone, you can re revoke the 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 conditional use permit to sell alcohol, but still allow the store to 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 sell gas and and their products, their other items, their grocery items.
Would it be possible to amend condition one to read more like condition 13? Because it seems like condition 13 is going into more detail about what the planning commission could do, and commission one just says revocation. And then if necessary, may modify or may recommend revocation after making applicable findings, but 13 talks more about various other steps that can be taken that isn't just jumping straight to revocation.
Yeah, we can, uh.
Well, it does kind of say that the planning commission may modify or make recommend end to et cetera, et cetera, number one. So it does kind of direct come back to us.
Well, we can, I mean, what we we could do one of two things. Either one, we can condense all of them into like an ABC type of, you know, action, meaning that if, you know, you you have the following actions based on revocation, uh, or or we can, you know, we can, we can combine like one and eight, because those are more towards, uh, the project instead of three, which just just regards alcohol sales, um, to include the noticing, the 10 day notice in in that type of thing. Um, I probably want to refer to Alex if, um, on how, what do you think? If if they wanted to combine the conditions or or make them more to where they're more, uh, one's definitely for if there are modifications, one's just for the store, one's for the alcohol sales. How how would we approach that?
I would recommend this is a CUP for the alcohol sales, so just a simple condition that says, you know, violations of this use permit are could result in review by the planning commission, um, subject to adjusted conditions of approval or potential revocation.
Wait, I think it kind of covers that in number one.
So that's probably 13, then, kind of, we could do away with 13? And keep number one?
What do you think?
I think if Alex is fine with that, then I'm fine with modifying number one slightly and striking 13. I just feel like there's a bit of duplication between the two, and also that one seems to be going a bit stronger than the other ones are. They talk about the potential closure of the entire business in one, not just revocation of the alcohol sales permit like you'll see in 23. I also stole my questions.
Hey, where do you see the like that could potentially revoke the business license?
So it's. So it says, for one, if any, any of conditions are found, I guess it should probably say any of these.
Oh.
But are found to be disregarded, the use permit will be subject to revocation, the business subject to potential closer, closure. That's a stronger threat than you see in the other conditions.
Yeah, I mean, some of these are potentially like, you know, they sell alcohol to underage minors, then, then that would probably.
So, or maybe we just get, we just close out, we, we modify condition one to just, instead of potential closure of the business, that, that the, we just get rid of the alcohol sales, which kind of says in condition 23, but.
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm sort of confused about why we have condition one and condition 13 and condition 23, because it seems like there's some overlap and also some conflict.
Well, there's some overlap in the sense that it gives you the authority to go above, if, if the business is not doing what it's supposed to be doing, it gives you the ability to do one of three, one of three items. Either close the business down, allow for, to, to the whole business to allow, and then allow for just the, just the not selling of alcohol. 13 is more of, is just that, you know, it is more of a review. So if you wanted to review the permit, like maybe you've heard something over, you know, within a year and you, and you want to review the permit, then I would bring that up as part of that. And I'd have to give the, I'd have to give the property owner a 10-day notice to say that the planning commission wants to review the permit. So like I said, there, I mean, Alex, what, what do you think on that?
I mean, the review one, I honestly don't think that needs to be a condition of approval. But perhaps just a very generic condition of approval that these conditions of approval may result in, in force, enforcement action by the city, you know, up to and including revocation of the use permit or something. Because the zoning code and the municipal code lay out already, you know, other remedies that are available.
Right.
You know, citations, business license revocation for violation of permits or, or code.
So we could probably get rid of condition number one then, because number 13 pretty much, if the permit conditions are not adhered to, the use permit subject to subsequent review by the planning commission, but, or by the review body may include, but not limited to imposing corrective actions for the project, including modifications or revocation. So if we get rid of number one, I think 13 and 23 cover what we need to, I mean, if I have agreement with the commission, we can get rid of condition number one.
I'd be amenable to that.
Okay. Just making your list.
Right. And then condition number 22, I suggest just changing of to or, because I think that's what's intended there.
Mm-hmm.
And then adding a new condition, number 29, stating that the coolers will be locked between 2:00 to 6:00 a.m. I think that was agreed with the applicant at the prior meeting that, you know, that was a condition that would be acceptable, just didn't get added in here. So I want to make sure that it's noted.
Okay.
And then going back to the staff report, E1, I guess my question is, was it possible to narrow down the blotter data to the block more specifically that the building is on? Or is it, or it's just, or we just have data for the Fitzgerald Drive corridor?
Well, it's normally they are, you know, it'll say in the 1400 block of Fitzgerald, or unless it's, there's an absolute, unless there is just, unless there was an actual call to that actual address. And in the blotter, I don't think there was any directly for 1401 Fitzgerald. It was more in the block, 400 block. So most of the, most of the, most of the calls that I took out of the blotter were in the block of 1500 block, 1300 block. So you can kind of get an idea of where it is on the, unless they called out the thefts, and usually that was, you know, at Target, at Bevmo, at, you know, wherever, wherever the theft was.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out where, how broad we're categorizing the Fitzgerald Drive corridor here in, in table one, whether it covers the entire.
It tires from Apian Way, because the 1300 block, the 1300 block and 1400 block are the Target Center is the 1300 block. The 1400 block is from out back, in and out, Anaby Station and Round Table. As you go around the corner, the 14, 1400 block, actually most of the evens are on the, I guess, the west side of Fitzgerald, or I'll say on the Anaby side of Fitzgerald going around the corner. Once you get to 1500s and the Motel 6, that's all that section from, from Lucky Center to Apian Way. So most of the, most of the issues were on the opposite side of the street, the 1300 block, which was the Targets, the Bevmos and all that area in, in, in the reporting, at least from the blotter.
Okay. So could you, could you maybe say as a subset of what's reported here, which of them were in the 1400 block in particular?
I mean, I could probably go back and find it and go back through. I just, I just did total numbers. I didn't go, I didn't do, like, this is in 1300, this is in 1400, this is 1500 block. I just went total numbers.
Just figured I'd ask in case you had that data ready to hand.
I mean, I, I have some of it, but I don't have all of it with me tonight. I mean, I can gather it all. I wrote it all down, but I have it all, but.
I think it's, well, that falls more into comments rather than questions. I think that's all my questions for now. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks. Commissioner Benuelos?
Yeah, I don't have any questions right now. Thank you.
Commissioner Martinez? Commissioner Martinez?
The only, thank you, Chair. The item I guess I'd like to call out, because I do use this facility on a regular basis, is that the trash receptacles be located at convenient locations, but add in that 19 that they be changed on a more regular basis, because oftentimes those trash receptacles are full and you can't add anything to them. And especially if we're going to start adding folks that are adding beer cans and things of that nature, we need to make sure that that particular location stays tight and clean. So rather than on a daily basis, maybe we say a twice daily or three times daily basis, just to make sure that they, that we stay on top of it. That would be the only comment I have. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Lamjulyn?
I don't have any questions at the moment.
Thank you. Commissioner Sandoval?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I did have a couple of questions. Trying to kind of get some clarification on the, the condition, you know, that we've kind of been modifying back and forth.
Right.
If the commission or gets to be, if, if, if it comes to our attention that, you know, that as a result of the, of the, of issuing this license, we get more peaks in crime, would the commission still be able to then be able to decide, oh, we've seen an increase in crime, maybe want to reevaluate the license? Or is it something that?
No.
Like, what would be the criteria for the commission to be, to decide whether or not, we want to revoke that license?
Basically, if, if, for example, the commission, and I'm not sure, I'd have to look at the Muni code, there is, you could place, if you want to review the permit within a year, to see if, you know, the crime, it would only have to be at dislocation. I mean, I couldn't, I'm not, I don't think it would be fair to the applicant that if crime increases in the area, but yet they haven't had one, they haven't had crime into there, that you revoke their permit based on the crime, crime.
Right.
You know, Targets, crime increased by 42% and we're penalizing their conditional use permit. So we could, you could add a condition that says that the permit were reviewed for a year for additional, for additional data for crime at this location to see if there's a potential increase. However, and even the police has kind of said, you know, depending on what's going to be your criteria for 10%, 20%, 5%, 30%, I mean, what's, what's going to be your ratio of, at one time to actually revocate that permit? So that's kind of the, and so, because like the police department, I mean, they, they can't even, they can't even, the, the way they report crime, they can't even add potential or, or future crime, estimates based in the future or anything like that. So when they report their stuff, so I just want to make sure that if you do something like that, that there's some type of criteria, and I think the applicant would need to, you know, work with the applicant on that as well, to see what, if there is anything that you guys would want to see. If you want to see it in a year, we can bring it back in a year and say, you know, if 14, we've had, you know, 15 crimes at 1401 Fitzgerald, that's up and above and beyond. However, they've all been stolen cars, has nothing to do with the store. I mean, you know, it all depends on, you know, that kind of stuff. So, but you can, you do have the ability to, if you want the, to review the permit within a year, you could come back and review the permit in a year.
Thank you. Yeah, that, yeah, that makes a lot of sense, because, you know, it's a very busy, it's a busy area. I did have another question on why, why specifically three months was chosen for the crime reporting?
Well, they were the last three, and I think I, I wanted to, it also includes the holidays. So included Halloween, it included Christmas, it included, you know, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that's happening between that period of time. So I thought that would be more, that's why, I mean, I picked the time. And the only other time I probably would have picked would have been July, August, or, you know, July, June, July, August. But I think I tried to put, how many people would be in that area? And we used to have the Halloween store over there as well in October. So it was just an added, I just thought that those three months would have been the most active months within the area. So that's, that's, that's all.
Sounds good. Thank you. And just also wanted to, that I'm also siding with Commissioner Metis on adding a condition 29. I would like to add it to the conditions of approval as well. That would be all my questions.
Okay. Thank you. You can now open the public hearing and ask applicant if they wish to make a presentation. Those persons that favor the project will then be given an opportunity to speak filed by those who are opposed to the project.
Yeah. Hey, hey, Dave, could you run the video for me? Thanks. Here we go. And this was provided by the applicant.
We're a family-run company. We value everybody's opinions. Everybody's listened to. We're a diverse organization. We're just a great place to work. And there's a lot of opportunity for growth.
I started working graveyard 12 years ago, and now I'm a regional account manager for the Rebel brand.
I mean, most of the people in this company started as cashiers.
The company invests in its employees to do their day-to-day jobs. It doesn't end there. It continues throughout your career. We find challenges, we'll get you training, and we'll give you opportunity to grow within the company.
Well, I started at the bottom just as a cashier. They worked with me with training and videos and helping me move up to the next level.
Most of our top management people, both out in the field and inside the office, come from the ranks of cashiers. We were able to provide a lot of opportunity that people never dreamed that they would have.
All our Rebels are lit. Our monitors, our menus, everything is all top of the line, brand new. They love it. They love the fact that we're in the modern century. I call it Starbucks of all gas stations.
As the convenience store industry continues to evolve into more of a fresh food destination, we've had to change our, the way we look at operating these stores and hiring people. No more, we're just looking for somebody to take cash and do a transaction. We're looking for people that can actually cook, provide value, provide fresh food service, do it with a smile. We're becoming a one-stop shop basically for all your needs.
I see the company growing likely double in size over the next five to 10 years. That will provide a lot of opportunity for employees, both in the field and at corporate.
When I'm speaking, I'm speaking from the heart. I'm trying to hold back tears too, because if I start getting into it too much, this company has helped me so much, and my family, and because of this company, I'm where I'm at now.
Our culture has changed over the years. We've gone from an operation of one convenience store to well over 450 today. One thing that we have done, and we've done well, we've still kept the family aspect of the business in place.
It's not a team, it's a family. I work for teams. This is totally different. And everybody knows everybody. And I have everybody on speed dial. And I tell them, if you stick with this company and give it 100%, this company will give you 100% in return. If you work hard and are here every day and do what you're supposed to do, they notice that. And if you take care of this company, the company will take care of you in return. So let's give it 100% every time you're here. It happened to me, it can happen to me.
We can now go to public comment or public hearing. And the order, I guess, is in favor. So Bruce Evans with, Bruce Evans is first.
Hi. Good evening again. I hope everybody had a good holiday. We've brought extra members of the team tonight. Told you that it's a family business. We have Anaby Oil. We have Summer Anaby here. Mike Wiggins is here. He's in charge of security. And we want to make sure we're, we're here to answer any questions you have, address any concerns. Mike and Summer can tell you about the, the law enforcement roots of the company, the responsible policies they have in place for, for beer and wine sales, and then, and then the goals of the store, which tie in kind of to the video that you see and the investment that they're going to make in this store with the plans that have been submitted to the city for a remodel. Not part of this application, but we do hope you see that the beer and wine is part of a, a larger goal, to make it a, a inviting, beautiful, modern, state-of-the-art convenience store. So rather than go right into the presentation, I thought I'd really try to answer the questions that you brought up tonight, and some of those carried forward from last time. So Commissioner Bender, you've had questions about undue concentration, as it says in the statute. And I deal with this statute a lot. I think you, you read it. It's not a very well-written statute. It's sometimes known as, I'm a land use attorney. I've done, I've done the research. I've looked into the legislative history on this. Sometimes referred to as the Caldera Bill, the Assemblyman who, who proposed it in 1995. The most important thing I think about the statute, because it's misconstrued often, is it, it doesn't mean there's too much alcohol in a particular census tract. The goal of the statute was if there were cities unlike Pinole that had a conditional use permit requirement, and there were a lot of them that didn't have that for alcohol in 1995, then there wouldn't be an automatic opportunity for the city to weigh in to the state before a license was issued. So what the, what the, what they did with that legislation is they created a baseline. So there's two triggers to public convenience or necessity. High crime, which this location is not by statute, that's not why they had to go before the city council. It was because of the undue concentration. You can end up with undue concentration because of good zoning, not in spite of, if you think about it, like this area, if you put the, the retail alcohol uses in the commercial zones, you're going to concentrate those uses. Your question is, how do you get the the concentration numbers? It's by population. Typically, one license, about every 2,200 people. So if the, if you're, if you're putting the alcohol in the commercial zones, and this area is very commercial, your population numbers are going to be low. So you end up with, with cities that have very high numbers of, of undue concentration by design. So I don't want to get too bogged down in, in the concentration, because the city council specifically already addressed that and made all the findings. But I did want to answer your question. Hopefully that's helpful. Next question, there's been a lot of discussion about the conditions. If, I think the city attorney will confirm this. If none of these conditions of approval were part of the CUP, the city has still all of the control here. They have this business on a short lease, because in your code and under the case law, the city has the inherent police power to abate a nuisance. So whether they violate the conditions, what, any business, I'm not talking about just this store, but whether there's a violation of the conditions, or whether there's a problem, or the police perceive a problem, or there are community complaints, or the planning department perceives a problem, if there are nuisances, the city has the inherent power to correct that. And the easiest way to do it is when you issue a CUP, you have extra control, because you can further condition the CUP, or you can. a CUP, you have extra control because you can further condition the CUP, or you can, you can take it away. We're not going to risk that with the investment that they're, that they've made and want to make into this store as part of the, part of the beer and wine. But the conditions in this case are very instructive to the business. They do set clear standards, and they're really good conditions. I mean, these are, there are conditions that require following all laws, of course. There are conditions dealing with no exterior alcohol signage. There are conditions mandating responsible beverage training. There are conditions that prevent loitering at this location, monitoring requirements for the business, that they have to maintain the site in a clean and orderly fashion. There are limits on certain container sizes of beer and wine. There's conditions related to trash. There's conditions related to maintaining clear windows. And so these are good conditions, and they are all agreeable to the applicant. And the extra condition that we volunteered last time regarding the cooler doors to be locked, again, that's something they would do anyway. So they're perfectly agreeable to adding that condition. Commissioner Martinez, you mentioned trash. Thank you for the comment.
Hold on one second. Justin, are we, we're limited to, sorry, pause. We're limited to like three minutes, right, per person?
No, the applicant can.
No, the applicant has more than.
Okay, okay. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Sure, I'll wrap up. Again, I do want you to hear from Summer and Mike. They, I think they have a, a unique perspective to tell you a little bit about their operation in the company. So I will wrap it up, and I want to be respectful of your time. Very pleased with that staff report. Very happy about the comments from the police department. They've made abundantly clear. They have not objected. They do not have concerns about this use. But it's not just a blanket approval to sell beer and wine that you'd be approving. It's qualified by all of those limitations and conditions. I did, I did think it was worthwhile pointing out the specific resolution from the city council, because the city council has already made findings. I was at that hearing. Beer and wine sales would promote the city's economic health. City council made a finding that the economic benefits cannot be achieved without the beer and wine sales. City council made a finding that the location has not been the subject of complaints or nuisances. And of course, they made a finding that the beer and wines would serve the public convenience. Again, Summer and Mike can, can go through it. This is not just a standalone effort to sell beer and wine. It's part of a larger goal for this site with a big investment to add grocery items and expand the offering and make that site look beautiful. And beer and wine is, is but a component, an important component, but a component to that effort. So happy to answer any questions. I know I should wrap it up, and I want to have time for Mike and Summer. So thanks very much.
Okay. Thank you. Next person would be Michael Wiggins.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name's Michael Wiggins. I'm the Director of Loss Prevention and Security for Anabi Oil. I'm a retired police captain from a city in LA County. And I first met Sam when I was a patrol sergeant, and he was assigned to my shift. We worked together for a couple of years, and we were dispatched to a burglary in progress call. There was, Sam went in pursuit. He was the first one on the scene. He went in foot pursuit, and he received a very substantial facial injury as a result of all of the police activity. A couple of surgeries, and the city determined that he was no longer able to work as a police officer and was forced into retirement. That was about 25 years ago. So I retired as a captain, and then the moral of that story is don't burn your bridges, because now I work for Sam. But, but as a part of that, I, I just wanted to bring to your attention that we take the privilege of selling beer and wine very seriously, both of us. Our, our roots are in law enforcement. We don't take that lightly. We've both worked the other end of it. We've worked underage by programs and shoulder tap programs. So we're very familiar with that. We also totally understand the working relationship and the privilege that you have to work with a city. And that's really what we're, we're, we're based on, family and relationships. As far as the training, we do provide our, all of our cashiers with training in the sales of alcohol. There's quite extensive training. We have advanced security and video footage of all of the stores. It's high definition. I can get license plates if we can get the cameras in the right locations on the canopies. Again, we use cash registers. They turn off at 2:00 AM. You can't scan alcohol after 2:00 AM. The cooler doors, we'll put the mag locks on them with the, with the new remodel. Right now, I might have to put hasp locks on the doors until we do the remodel, but the remodel will come with the mag lock. So they're electric and you won't see them. Working relationship with the police department, I have no problem with that. That's, that's awesome. In fact, I'm fully in support of that. And I would like to just call out that I have been in contact with the command staff of the police department and received an email from Commander Avery today after a couple of phone calls. Says, Mike, I hope all is going well with you. My counterpart, Commander Crone, actually helped out with this project. However, I've provided the planning commission with input and statistics in the past. The Shell gas station has been a good partner with us in, in the past, and we look forward to continuing our relationship with you in the future. So in conclusion, I'd just like to represent that we don't take the responsibility lightly, and we're more than willing to work with the city and the police department to ensure that it's a good partnership. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. And then I have Summer. I can't pronounce your, necessarily, that's anybody, Summer Anabi or Irifage?
Thank you. Hi. I'm here to represent the family. I mean, I, the video said it all, basically. We're a family-owned company, first generation, a husband-and-wife team that started with one gas station. Their kids are all grown now and starting to come back into the business. We run a clean operation. We wouldn't be where we are if we didn't do it right. Big oil companies invested in us. They've awarded us their sites to operate, and that, just alone, that alone tells you that we are good operators. The Rebel brand you saw is a new brand that we are starting. We've acquired that brand back in 2015, and we are remodeling it and changing it, and we're putting it into all our gas stations. So we are ready to put in a big investment in this location, much needed, bringing in a food concept, new car wash. I mean, there's, there's a lot that's needed at this site, and this beer and wine would just enhance it and complete it, and make it just like all our other stores with all the offerings that we have. So I'm here to beg, plead, to please work with us and award us this beer and wine license so we can proceed with modernizing the site and rebranding it with the new Rebel name. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin, are there any more public comments, either in favor or unopposed?
I, I see one hand raised online. It's hard to tell, you know, the position. But this is from the person with phone number ending in 5748. Please press star six when you're ready to talk.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Yes. My name is Anthony, and I'm a long time citizen of Panol, over 40 years, and I've seen a lot of things come and go in the city. And I'd just like to say, I didn't have the, the funds and wherewithal to bring a big song and dance pony show with me. But I speak for a lot of the community and the people in Panol that'll probably have to go to the mat on this one to oppose the permitting of this Shell station corporation property in Panol to have a, another beer, wine, and liquor license. I'll go on record by saying that the numbers on the, in, in the city of Panol with regard to liquor stores, especially in and around Fitzgerald Drive, are over-concentrated on both ends of Fitzgerald Drive. Literally morning, noon, and night, you know, people can go in there and, and get their liquor or their fix or what have you as permitted. But, you know, there, there's got to be an end game that we need to look at, the big picture, you know? No one's talked about or reported from the city staff on the Valero, and that was a couple of questions. Both the staff there and myself and others were concerned about what is happening down the road with the Valero convenience store slash gas station. And so I guess, have they already been permitted? So, you know, are you going to rubber stamp this Shell station to be permitted or vice versa? I think that would be an important factor. And the blocks that cover the, the police report numbers, I think should include the 1,200 block, and that's five or six blocks of Fitzgerald Drive. But no one said anything about the 1,200 block. But we have numerous retailers and restaurant operators that already have beer, wine, and liquor licenses up and down Fitzgerald Drive, as well as convenience store gas stations. And case in point, just last week, there was a big armed robbery incident, I'll call it, that could have ended up in, citizens that could have been shot and/or killed at the Chevron Gas Station Convenience Store. And I heard the person was going through there with some beer and wine and some other things, maybe, but his credit card bounced, or it was invalid. And then he went out and he broke into a car in the pump lot with the, and stole a lady's purse. And when she went chasing after him, she went chasing after them and two bystanders, mind you, and the guy turned around in or outside of the pump lot at the Chevron Gas Station there across from Trader Joe's and shot, and shot up the place, shooting both of the bystanders that tried to go to the lady's aid, who was chased down and beat up by the perpetrator there. And they had to bring in a K-9 unit all the way from Concord, and they finally apprehended the guy who went through and terrorized that block and community unbeknown to the rest of us. We weren't even notified of that incident. So I don't know if the, you can ask that, you know, if something happens like that, the public's going to be notified to close down or lock down that area. But case in point, a family friend of mine was next door and jacking the box, and he was having lunch there with his two children. He was the fire, fire captain of the city of Panol, and he was stuck in there. And supposedly, the perpetrator went through, jacking the box right next door to that. And, and we have a lot of other crime, strong-arm robberies up and down Panol that weren't talked about. At the mattress store on the west side of the freeway, it's a few doors down, right across from Panda Express. They were robbed with a gun last year. And another one just recently happened in that same quarter last week, if not the week before that, with, with a gun. So, you know, garbage in, garbage out with regard to the police numbers and the police report. And I would just look at those numbers with a fine-tooth comb and probably double them, because a lot of those numbers aren't reported accurately on the police blotter, nor are they reported for the type of crime that's being committed in that quarter. They can be doubled.
I know. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. Justin, is there anyone else with?
No, there's no one else for now.
Okay. If there's no other public comments, then the public hearing will be closed, and we may now discuss amongst ourselves and ask any further questions of staff. Commissioner Sandoval, I will call on you first.
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Lam Julian?
No questions at this time. Thanks.
Commissioner Martinez?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Ben Wielas?
Just a quick question of staff. The use, Target has a use permit where they can't sell liquor after 10 o'clock. Is that still in place?
I don't know. I'd have to check, I'd have to check that out.
I think it is, because they go through a whole thing where they block off the row, the aisle and the whole thing. So I'm guessing that it still is.
They might not have to go through there when they, when they got approved. So they might, they, they might do that as from a company standpoint, not necessarily from the city standpoint.
Well, I remember there was a use permit that was, there was something that was done in, you know, about, oh, I don't know, 2015, 2016, somewhere around in there. Because I remember I kept complaining to the planner for doing it. Because my wife went to buy beer at Target after 10, and I came back and had to hear about it. So.
Okay. I can take a look at that.
But I was just wondering about that, because, you know, the, the hours that, you know, they vary. And they certainly aren't all on at the same time. And I've actually never heard of a, a company in, like, like this where at 2:00 they lock up the, lock up. I had never, I mean, maybe it's, maybe it's just because I don't, I'm not running around buying beer at 3:00 in the morning, but, but maybe that's a common thing, and you guys would know better than me. But I don't think, I can't think of anybody else that does that in town, you know, that this, you know, 7-Eleven or anyone like that. But I know there are some rules they can't, but I don't know whether they physically.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's been a lot more technology probably in the last, probably three or four years regarding the registers. I've, I've heard of the registers where they can't scan them, so they can't.
Oh, yeah, I've heard of that.
And, and they're getting to, at least some cities I worked in the past were conditioning them that they had to lock, lock it up in terms of the beer and the wine that, that's out in the, that's out on the thing, out on the floor, so to speak. And then most of the, I mean, they're not asking to sell distilled spirits, so, you know, but most of some, some of those convenience stores, then they put everything behind the counter. So, I mean, you know, it all depends on what, you know, they're allowed to do and, and that. I mean, the cities usually dictate kind of, you know, how much, what size, all that kind of stuff. So.
Yeah. And I just was asking about that. I also wanted to thank the applicants for their presentation. I saw, I saw this years ago on the, when I was on the city council, when there was a request for a beer and wine license, and it was turned down. And I don't recall the specifics, because I'm just getting too old for that kind of stuff. But I do remember, we didn't have a presentation like this. It was, this was, was far more, it seems that you caught, we caught the spirit of what your company is trying to do and made it understandable to me in terms of, so this was way different than what we saw, what I saw, you know, a few years back. So I just wanted to thank you for that presentation. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Chairman Niss?
Sure. First off, I, I think we're still doing questions rather than comments, right?
I think it's.
Just part of your deliberations.
Yeah. Well, I guess, in terms of deliberation, I'd like to echo Commissioner Ben Wielas's comments, thanking, you know, the presenters tonight for giving their presentation. I appreciated hearing from Mr. Wiggins, in particular, his background and the sort of experience that he had and how he related that to the work that he does trying to secure sites and making sure that everything's under control. And also from Ms. Anabi clarifying that the Rebel brand is actually part of the Shell thing, because for, when the presentation went up on the screen, I was a bit confused what was being presented for, because I didn't see Rebel branding anywhere on the rest of the documentation. So I appreciate that being cleared up. With regards to Anthony's comments, it seems like a lot of them are simply outside of what the planning commission can really consider, talking about the increased rate of violent crime in different parts of the city. For example, a false and a determination of public convenience and necessity that the council's made. So we can't really, you know, touch that sort of thing. One point that he made was with regards to the Valero gas station and this, like, is there, is there any meaningful link between the two, or are they just treated as two separate things, no matter what?
What do you mean?
Like, he, he was, he was saying, he was asking whether, if the Valero gas station that was being built had a beer and wine permit, whether that would have an impact on this, or whether they would be necessarily linked, or whether they're completely independent. I think they're probably completely independent, but.
Yeah. And in conversations with the police department, I mean, all, like, like I said, I mean, there, when they, when they looked at it, the project originally, before we brought it back in December, they looked at all the different stations and, and the between the ones. in December, they looked at all the different stations and, and the, between the ones that had alcohol permits, the ones that didn't have alcohol permits. And, and there was really no difference in terms of, of the crime or, you know, the statistics that you guys were looking at. So, um, so that, that was another reason why they felt that this wasn't going to add any significant, um, any significant crime rates to the city because basically on the review of the other five or six, seven that are in the city, there was really no, not a lot of difference between the ones that sold alcohol and the ones that didn't sell alcohol. So, and, and just, and I don't know if any of them sell distilled spirits. I don't think they do, um, in terms of gas station, in terms of service stations.
Distilled spirits isn't really relevant for this item though.
No, no. But that's what I'm saying. I mean, sometimes the distilled spirits adds an additional thing, but, um, but in this case, they're just selling beer and wine.
And then finally, sort of the final comment then Anthony made was suggesting basically doubling the totals for crime incident due to underreporting. Do you think that's realistic or do you think that the crime data that's reported on the blotter is roughly speaking accurate to the actual crime rates?
It's hard to say. I mean, I, I, that's one thing I, um, with the, with the police department, I mean, it's pretty accurate of what happened during that day, um, the day in question, whether it's the Saturday, December 6th or December 10th. So, um, I, I, you know, I don't know what goes on. I mean, there could be things that go unreported.
Right.
Um, we don't know anything about that. Or there could be, you know, what could be, um, you know, it could be, there might be a call there, but it might not necessarily be for robbery. Maybe a disturbance call or maybe it's more of, you know, kids just hanging out and so they got called at 1401 Fitzgerald. I mean, so it all ranged. So I, I'm assuming that the blotter is accurate in terms of the crime within the city. I don't know if there's any additional ways of finding out of if there, I mean, to double the crime. I don't know if doubling, doubling this gives you all the crime in Pinot or not doubling it gives you all the crime in Pinot. And the police department seemed, seemed pretty, uh, clear that the blotter, you know, those are crimes that were reported as part of the day, within the day of that.
I think basically it's reasonable to assume that the reported crime data, roughly speaking, tracks the actual crime data.
I, I would have to ask, I would refer to the police department on that. I'm not, I don't, I'm not really qualified to answer that question. I'd have to ask PD that. But I would just, I mean, the only assumption I will make is that I'm assuming that what's reported on the blotter is what happens during that day. That's.
All right. And I guess the final thing I noticed that in the conclusion of the staff report, it does save a police department explicitly says that they have no reason to believe that this station selling beer and wine would have a negative impact on the crime rate. So even though the police department doesn't have anybody here tonight, they have explicitly stated, you know, they're fine with this. So I think that's worth noting in our deliberations. And I think that's all the sort of follow-up stuff I have for right now.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Bender?
I don't have any questions at this time. And I'll just save my comments for the comment period.
I think we're kind of in.
Oh, you're kinda blending it now?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
We can always go around again.
Uh, I want to echo Planning Commissioner Maness's comments about the Rebel. Uh, I was a little confused when I saw the, the video and then seeing the application was an Abi shell. It, it's a minor point, but it was a little confusing. Um, I have gone through this and done some homework and, and perhaps above and beyond what I've seen in the staff report, but I haven't come across anything that would actually make me want to be in opposition to this application, frankly. I say that because I did, when I, some of the things that I went through and looked at criteria, yes, it could be sometimes confusing. They talk about census tract versus the ABC has another methodology where they look at it, the entire municipality. But I haven't seen anything that, uh, causes alarm other than the simple fact that this average 29% of crime occurs within this portion of Pinot. I don't, frankly, don't care what the police say. That's rather significant. But I cannot find or create a, if I can borrow a legal term out of context, I can't find a nexus between that statistic and this type 20 license, frankly. The only other thing I would like to add, and this is for future and this is for staff, I'd like a consideration, cause the ABC does have this moratorium thing going on. And I can say just using their formula, which actually right now is 25, uh, 1 to 2,500 based on the 23, their latest report, um, that the, it would be good just to have staff acknowledge that in future reports because at some point, Pinot, if there's more applications, Pinot is going to cross the threshold where at some point, actually in four years, ABC may come down with a determination that there's a moratorium on type 20 licenses in Pinot. I, I did look at the numbers and we're not there yet. Pinot right now has only four.
Yeah.
Uh, type 20 licenses. So we're far away because if you take 19,000 plus people and divide by 2,500, you come up with like 7.6 or something like that. So it's not an issue. But I do think it would be kinda good just to keep track of that going forward for, for any future applications.
Yeah. And what I, and what I can do for the commission is I can just, uh, I can get that, I can call ABC and just kinda email you, email you guys separately on, uh, what a moratorium would look like, what it would be, what it would, you know, if we were, if, if we were to get there.
Yeah. That would be good because I've never found, I've never understood the definition of moratorium other than what the, what that term implies.
Right.
But I've never seen a definition of that.
Okay.
But that concludes my comments.
Commissioner Martinez?
Thank you, Chair. I just ran some rough numbers and I'm definitely in favor of this. And the reasoning behind, um, my position on this is when I look at the various retailers around them, most of them Bevmo, um, APN Food and Liquor Grocery Outlet, they're all closing at 9:00 PM. Then when you go to Target, that's the cutoff is 10:00. And the others in the area, Lucky, Pinot, Vista, United Food Mark, 11:00. And the last one that's open that late is Food Max at midnight. So there is that window where there are folks in the community that may want to purchase something after those hours. So having a provider provide a service in our community for our citizens is actually a good thing because we're missing that window currently. So, um, I'd just like to thank you for the information and it allowed us to look at this a little bit more holistically on what our citizens may actually need in the community. So thank you.
Anybody else? Good point, actually. Uh, does anybody else have any questions or comments for staff or the applicants or discussionary items?
No, I was just gonna state that Commissioner Bender and Commissioner Martinez just said what I was going to say, so thanks. Thank you.
The thing about concentration or over-concentration, that assumes that everybody's open at the same time. So if we have all these staggered, uh, sales hours, I don't see it being concentrated.
Okay. Did anybody else have any questions or comments or discussionary? So I've heard a couple of people that say, yes, they're generally in favor of this. I think the couple of things that we're looking at, um, if we're at the point where we're talking about making a motion, one way or the other, was a condition 29, we're adding condition 29 for the coolers to be locked between 2:00 and 6:00 AM. Condition 22, correcting the geographic error of, of to or, uh, and then deleting conditionally use number one, but keeping number 13 and 23. And, and then Commissioner Martinez, your commissioner, uh, sorry, condition used number 19, which was the trash, um, either twice daily or, you know, maybe as needed or something just above beyond just moving it to just the daily. And I'm sure the applicant will keep it clean as, I think that's part of that, that issues have to keep it clean anyways. So those are some of the specific language you're looking for.
On 19, what I'd like to see is that the trash be removed, um, twice or three times daily, just so that we can ensure that those trash cans are not overflowing and the wind, especially in that area, the wind blows through there and it just makes a mess of things. So it would be really helpful.
Do you wanna quantify it or do we think we just kinda keep it daily and/or as needed to keep the area tidy? It's hard to enforce once someone's got their count.
Can you give us some guidance on language that we've used in the past that would help us, uh, tidy this particular line item up, please?
Usually, usually we do that on an as-needed basis because then if we, if, if staff were to inspect and we, we go and we, and it's not there, we can, well, it's as needed like right now. So, um, usually as-needed basis is sufficient in, in these, in these cases.
Okay. So if we could just add as-needed basis, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
With that be said, does anybody wanna make a motion to approve, deny, or I don't hear, hearing anybody needing additional information, I think, so.
I think I'd like to clarify condition 19 a bit. Are we replacing daily with as-needed or are we saying daily and as-needed?
Daily and as-needed.
Yes.
Okay. Then I would move that we approve the item before us, including the various attachments, exhibits, conditions of approval, design drawings and so on, with the modifications of the conditions of approval of adding condition number 29, requiring locking compartments for the alcohol between 2:00 and 6:00 PM, modifying condition number 22 to say or instead of of, striking condition number one in its entirety and changing condition number 19 to say, remove all trash on a daily and as-needed basis.
I would be in favor of that and just adding on 29, Commissioner Menace, I think you meant 6:00 AM?
Right. 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM.
Yeah.
Correct. You said 6:00 PM, so.
Oh, no.
Perfect.
Thank you for clarifying.
So you're seconded in?
Yes. With that minor change, I would second that motion, please.
Planning Manager Hannah, uh, call for a vote, please.
Commissioner Lam Julian?
Yes.
Commissioner Sandoval?
Yes.
Commissioner Bender?
Yes.
Commissioner Benwellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Niss?
Yes.
Chair Benzuli?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Great. Thank you. Best of luck. Um, item F, old business, there is none. Anything? Item G, new business. Number one, Planning Commission Community Engagement Subcommittee, which is to select members to serve on the Planning Commission Community Engagement Subcommittee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was an item that was brought up by Commissioner Lam Julian, uh, probably about three meetings ago, three, four meetings ago. Uh, and we wanted to make sure that we're, we are letting the public know what we're doing as part of, uh, the Planning Commission as well as projects within the city. And so staff recommended that we do a subcommittee and, and so, um, we are looking for, to create a subcommittee for community engagement so that we can bring back policies and stuff that we can bring back for the commission to, to review and approve. So, um, with that, I would recommend that the Planning Commission select two members for the subcommittee of, of community engagement, for the purpose of community engagement.
Go ahead.
So before we select the subcommittee members, I think it might be worthwhile to discuss sort of the scope of the subcommittee and like how frequently it'll be meeting, how long it would be meeting for and so on. Cause I think that might shift which members want to be on. So how frequently are we expecting this subcommission to meet and what do we expect its sort of topics to be?
Uh, I, I think that in the beginning, probably maybe a couple of times, uh, in the next three or four weeks, um, and depending on schedules and that, with the outcome of being able to bring to the commission different ways that we can, that we can be able to communicate to the public what's, what's happening in a, except in, you know, in a more broad base, um, type of way. I think it would take probably, probably total, probably take about five or six meetings, just two or three, just to kinda, you know, get some of the ideas and then maybe the next two would be more of, you know, putting the policy together and then approving it and then bringing it back to the commission for, uh, for review and approval. So I'm thinking about six meetings, six, seven meetings, probably about two to three month period, um, at the most, unless there's something that really, we really need to hone in on. But that's kinda what I'm, that's kinda what I was looking at unless, unless somebody else has another, um, another way or something else to look at. But that's obviously maybe two, six meetings over the next couple of months and, and get a policy to, to take a look at.
Okay. And this would be, uh, this, this is a sort of ad hoc commission only subcommittee or is it also about the public?
It's an ad hoc. It's just a, a planning commission ad hoc committee.
And how long do you think each meeting would be expected to run for?
Uh, hopefully no more than an hour and a half. I, I, of course, me being conservative in the way we all do our meetings, I would say no more than about an hour and a half. I know people have a lot of, a lot of different things. So I'd say about an hour, between, between an hour, an hour and a half.
Okay. Just wanted to do some of the sort of scoping comments on that stuff given, you know, my experience on the other subcommittee.
Yeah. That one's a little more, that one's a little teach, a little more detailed, little more, uh, a little more. But I think, um, you know, depending on who's on the subcommittee, I think we'll, we'll get a, a good, good head start and then we'll, it should, I, I think it should come together fairly quickly is what I'm thinking, so.
Okay. That's all I have for the moment.
I did have a question. Would we be able to, if on the, on the committee, would we be able to do it via Zoom if possible?
Yeah. Yeah. We have the ability to do that. So, yep.
And through the chair, I just want to clarify that this is an ad hoc, um, subcommittee, not a, not a permanent subcommittee subject to the Brown Act.
No.
And so that's why, and that's why you can participate by Zoom during this meeting.
Yeah. It's just an ad hoc committee, standing committee.
Anybody have questions on the scope or the nature of the, I think we talked a little bit about it last couple of meetings. Otherwise, I think, or is anyone interested? I know, to put you on the spot, Commissioner Lam Julian, but it was kinda your idea.
She's a lifetime member on this committee.
I would be interested on being on the subcommittee.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other?
I'm also interested as well.
Great.
I have been interested, but I'm not sure how large you want the subcommittee to be. Do you want there to be three or just two? Okay. Then I'll stand aside and let Keshar, Sandoval and Lam Julian be on it, since I'm already on a subcommittee anyway.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Great. Well, thank you for, we need to, we don't really need to vote on that or anything.
Well, we just need a motion. We just need a motion in a second and a, just a, uh, we can do a roll call if you want or we can do, uh, all those in favor vote by saying aye. So, but we do need a motion in a second.
Can I add something to that? Um, please, because being on the, the other ad hoc commission, can we also nominate Rafael as an alternate? Because what we're, what we found with the other commission that we're on is sometimes one of us or can't be there. So if we can backfill that other person to keep the process moving forward, it would be a good idea.
Okay.
If, if you're agreeable to that, Commissioner Menace?
I'm agreeable if I, Manager Hannah thinks it's necessary.
Uh, I'm not gonna tell. I'm not gonna tell you. No, it's not necessary. It's not necessary at all. Uh, in, in this case, like I said, I think this, this committee's gonna meet fairly short. I don't think an alternate would be needed in this type of committees. It's, it's gonna be fairly short, uh, in terms of duration. And I think if, if we were doing something in the nature of like the odds, uh, the odds, oh yeah, then definitely we would need an alternative. But I think in this case, I think, I think the three of us would be able to, to knock this thing out and bring it back to the commission in a fairly short period of time.
Thank you. I'm satisfied with that comment.
All right. So in that case, I would like to make a motion to create the ad hoc subcommittee for community engagement and avoid Commissioners Lam Julian and Sandoval to the subcommittee.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Great.
Most curious.
Thank you for taking the lead on that or taking me for that.
I will need your sketches.
Um, is there any other new business? Otherwise we move on to H, City Planner's Commissioners Report.
I'll go first.
I'll go first. Just to let you know, we are, let the commission know that we are moving forward with all the odds work, so I appreciate Commissioner Manis and Commissioners Bender's time, and we're now doing the ordinance, the zoning ordinance, which is now one of the, the major lists for this. Let you know that we are, Justin and I have got a lot of work to do on the housing element for the, for the first couple of years. We've got our task list and it's, it's, we're going to be very busy. We are working on the Penole Shores Two project, the redo, part two. So that, I think, will be coming to you, excuse me, that should be coming to you hopefully in the spring and for review and approval, or, you know. And other than that, we're working, I've got, Frankie, I did get your email regarding the conference, so I will have everybody's hotel and to you and your, 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 your buy into the conference. The travel will be on you guys, however, there is reimbursement available from the city. So depending on how you want to travel, whether you want to travel by air, by, by sea, by land, however you want to, however you want to, however you want to do that. So the city is open, the, the city will reimburse your travel, but we just wanted to make sure of, you know, what, what, we didn't want to lock in anybody in case someone wanted, didn't want to fly, or they wanted to drive, or they wanted, you know. So however you want to get to the conference, that, that's, that's reimbursable, so. Rafael?
And we can discuss that among ourselves, like the five of us going without that being a Brown Act issue or anything?
Well, it, it isn't a Brown Act, it is not a Brown Act issue, because you're at a conference, conferences, the Brown Act exempts you at conferences and those types of things. However, we will not be talking about city business, we'll be talking about the conference in general, so, so yeah, Lilly and I will make sure we corral you, corral you properly and make sure we're not, we're not doing it. But the Brown Act, and Alex, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think conferences, you're kind of, you're, you have a little bit longer leash than, than you would somewhere at a party or something, something like that.
Yeah, you just, when you're at the conference, should not be gathering as a majority of you anywhere to discuss, you know, anything in the city's business, or, you know, ideas you get at the conference. But you can certainly, you know, participate in these larger sessions and, you know, socially interact with each other while at the conference, just, no discussing any city business, or potential city business.
And, and so far, I've got Rafael, Tim, Gabriel, and Christie going. John's not going, and Frankie's not going. So I have the four of you. Okay. And then Lilly and I will be there as well, so. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Unless you have any questions or any, or any comments, or if I can answer any of your questions.
Is there anyone online at all, Justin?
No questions online right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Manis?
Just wanted to sort of follow up on earlier. Do we have any expected timeline for when we're going to be seeing the Safety and Environmental Justice General Plan element updates?
No. We, we are, we are currently working on those. We, we, in terms of the safety element, I think we have our final comments back from Police and Fire, and so they'll be, they'll be putting those together. Environmental justice is probably going to be behind that one a little bit, because that's also, we'll be combining a lot of the health element, so, because we're, by creating the environmental justice, we'll be, I think health and safety are like one element, so we're breaking kind of that apart, doing safety on its own, and then bringing some of the health. So the environmental justice element will come a little bit, a little bit later, but probably, we're hoping to get at least a safety element here, probably in the spring, April, May, June, somewhere in that range. And then, and then, and then the environmental justice element right behind it.
Anything else for the City Planner or Commissioner's report? Moving on to I Communications, does anybody have any communications they'd like to talk about?
Well, I figured we should all wish everybody a Happy New Year, given it's 2024 now.
Happy New Year.
Okay, if that, any else, our next meeting, I'm Jay, will be our regular meeting on January 22nd, 2024 at 7:00 p.m. And with that, I will adjourn.